Business. Father, we ask for your blessings on our first responders. Father, we ask that you give us the wisdom and the discernment to make the right decisions tonight. Father, we ask all these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now we review the meeting procedures. The planning staff presents application requests to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicant regulations and conforms to comprehensive plan and applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. If the responsibility, it is the responsibility to make the presentation on request and to address any conditions or factual findings which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comment on public hearing items will be limited to thirty minutes each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans. Public comments on site plans will be limited to fifteen minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments will be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesman, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. All right, first thing I'd like to say as the chairman tonight is I believe in transparency and honesty in government, and this is the first time I've ever chaired a public meeting. So please, you know, allow me whatever. If any of my colleagues have to correct me or help me in any way, it's just because if I do two of these, if I do another one, it'll be two that I've done. So I am brand new, so please bear with me. All right, now, staff, do you have any announcements?
I have one. Good evening, planning commissioners, Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. I just wanted to remind the commission that there is a special called work session that will be held on August eighth at five thirty PM at the library. This will be a joint work session with the mainland planning commission, islands planning commission, and the board of appeals to start reviewing the draft zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. So I just wanted to remind everybody about that, and we will have the agenda and links to those drafts coming out tomorrow for everyone, and they're on the website already. The links to the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance are on the website now.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leaf.
All right, thank you.
All right, in general business, we need to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held July the eleventh, twenty twenty-three, subject to any necessary corrections. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, commissioners, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Okay, let's have the vote. Six, zero. All in favor? All opposed? Six, zero. All right, now, item number two on the agenda tonight is SP fifty-four eighty-three. Sixty-seven thirty-five New Jessup Highway Multi-Family Development Site Plan. Consider site plan approval for the new two hundred and forty unit multi-family development located at sixty-seven thirty-five New Jessup Highway, partial zero-three dash two-six-seven-eight-one. The property is zone medium residential. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Scott Levive, Executive Real Estate LLC, owner and applicant. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is SP fifty-four eighty-three, and this property, you may recall, was rezoned a few months ago, was rezoned from a mix of FA mobile home to all medium residential. So it's sixteen units per acre are allowed on the site. They are proposing a two hundred and forty unit multifamily development. At this point, they are proposing it as one, one site where they'd be rental units. They, there is a private access easement currently along Fernwood Drive that does go to some single-family homes at the end of Fernwood off of three forty-one, and the proposal is to reroute that private access easement through this new development out to a new access point onto Highway three forty-one, and the existing curb cut for Fernwood would become emergency access only. So the fire department has reviewed and approved that. And they are showing some buffers for the property for adjacent neighbors. There's an existing twenty-foot natural buffer that they plan to remain along the northern boundary. Western boundary, a type A modified, is proposed adjacent to the FA and the MH zoning. So this is the property off of three forty-one. This is just north of Oak Grove Road. And this is the survey. There's a large Georgia power easement that runs through this part of the property. They do have a portion along the front edge that is highway commercial, and that is not part of this particular site plan, but they are keeping that as highway commercial zoning at this point, but do not have any development plans in at this time for that. So here is the site plan, and there's a few different pages for this. This is just kind of the overall. As you can see at the top of the screen, this kind of more bold dotted line, this is the emergency access, and then the new access per GDOT approval would be right here. This is showing the northern part of the property, and this is their natural buffer they plan to maintain along this property boundary here. The southern part of the site. And these are the proposed elevations. So it's a multifamily product, but they are showing individual units. And these are your possible motions, and recommended motion is to approve as presented. And Jake Hightower is here for the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, are there any questions for staff?
Can you give a little more clarity on the piece of the easement where you said it would be contingent? Is that something that has to be worked out with the property owners that utilize that easement?
Yeah, that was a question I did have back to the applicant, because what, what is planning happening right now? Fernwood, you know, goes straight out here, and what will happen with this new proposal is Fernwood would kind of route through the development and then come out here. So I have asked, you know, what, to ensure that there is approval, you know, from those homeowners to reroute the easement. So Mr. Hightower may have some updated information on that. But because it is a plotted private access easement, we would need to have an expedited subdivision done just to replat where that easement is located. So they would, you know, be officially rerouting it from here to down here. Would need to be a minimum of sixty feet wide to, to meet our code requirements. So that's still a piece that would need to be ironed out before we could issue building permits. But I'll see if Mr. Hightower has some additional info on that. Thanks.
Any additional questions, commissioners? Okay, I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and address the commission.
Good evening, commissioners. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering. Thank you for the time tonight. To answer your question, Commissioner New, the, the original plan was to use that top entrance, but then after coordinating with GDOT for turn lanes, D cell lanes, they said that that'd be too close to that property line. So it was in coordination with GDOT, they asked that we move that entrance down. And Ms. Leaf is correct that the coordination between the owner and the, of the, of the large parcel as well as the individual owners would have to, would, they would have an agreement to where the easement would either remain in place for them to use that road, but to be honest, it's a, it's not a maintained road, whereas this, the existing road where they could move the easement down would be a maintained paved road where they would have access as well, and that will take place between the owner of this property as well as the adjacent landowners. And until that easement is, is ironed out, they can't issue sort of building permits or go forward with the project. So that'll still remain at the staff level for making sure all that's in place. But either way, that access easement is still where that dirt road access is to the north.
So would GDOT allow, just clarity, allow, if, if you didn't reach agreement with the property owners in the rear that have use of that easement, would GDOT, with you moving the entrance, can that still function for them? Would GDOT be as a private easement?
Yes, ma'am. The explicit question was asked, can we have those two access points? And they said yes, so long as that this is not a, there's not two main points of access. It's the main access for the development, which is the proposed access, but then this one can still stay in place as well.
And that, that road's currently not paved, is that right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Any additional questions, commissioners?
And the, the proposed access that they would use would meet the county's standards because it has to for the new development as well.
That's correct, and it would be, as the point of, of the quickest return to the easement, it'd be from, it wouldn't be just be entering through the side, it would be from the main entrance to this intersection, then straight back up to the existing easement.
Mr. Hightower, forgive me, it's been a long day. Did you tell, did you say a second ago that the residents that currently live down at the end of Fernwood could potentially use the Fernwood entrance and exit off of three forty-one? Or is that something that would eventually be shut down and maybe gated with a knock box?
To my understanding is if they were to reach an agreement where they'd have that easement to use that main entrance, it would make sense to put a gate there with a knock box, because we don't want people to use that access, but we want the ability to be there in case the fire department does need it.
And the reason this was changed, or revised, maybe is the better word, was because of DOT?
Correct.
And the, the D cell and its relationship. Is that, I don't know if you remember, I know Wesley was working on this, Mr. Franks was working on this. One of the questions that was asked specifically by those residents was, would they still be able to maintain access to Fernwood, and they, the owner said yes, and obviously, it's now not up to the owner, it's up to DOT.
That's correct.
All right, thank you for clarification. Commissioners?
Just, just out of curiosity more than nothing, decision, is it still going to be? I, I see it's plotted as townhomes, so is it gonna be sold, or sold as individual property owners right, right now? Or is it still gonna just be held by the developer as a rental?
To my understanding, it is a, one parcel as one owner as rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower. Okay, at this time, we need to open the public comment period. Anyone want to come up and speak in favor of this project? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak in opposition of this item? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve as presented, SP five-four-eight-three. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, commissioners. Any discussion? No discussion. Okay, let's have a vote. Everybody in favor? The motion passes. Six. We have five, five commissioners, five of, the motion passed five-zero. Okay, item number three, SP fifty-five oh-three, enclave phase three B site plan approval. Consider the site plan approval for the new two hundred and four unit multifamily residential project at fifteen hundred Glenco Parkway, partial zero-three dash fourteen-three-seven-one. The site is zone planned. The site is zone planned development, ZM three-three-nine-three. Jake Hightower, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Matthew T. King, Crown Royal Estate Group LLC owner. Mr. Postal, please present.
Uh, Maurice Postal, Glen County Plan and Zoning. Uh, this project is a request for site plan approval for a new two-hundred-and-four unit multifamily residential project. Uh, yes, you can see on the zoning map, this project is directly to the east of the current enclave phases. Uh, this is the site plan. Uh, if you were on the planning commission a couple of years ago, you may recall that a site plan with this configuration was approved. Uh, that will expire next month. So the reason for this application is to extend the period of the site plan for the new developer. And these are elevations of what the apartment buildings will look like. And these are your possible motions, and Mr. Hightower can speak on this project.
Okay, Mr. Postal, is that it?
Yes.
Is that all the presentation? Okay, um, commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to invite the applicant or agent to come up and address the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Jake Hightower, Robert Civil here for the enclave phase two. Uh, as Mr. Postal said, this was before the commission two years ago. We are in our construction plan phase right now. We have about one or two more county approvals before it goes to the EPD for kind of the final last step. Uh, the site plan rules are we have to break ground within two years. And we'll be within just a few weeks of that. So just for safety, per, or just for, you know, to be safe, we decided to go and submit a site plan to extend it for two more years. Uh, but the, uh, the applicant did purchase this property, so he's full steam ahead and, and ready to get going. Um, this is again, just making sure we have all the paperwork in line. And the configuration you see is the same one that you saw, uh, two years ago. So also available for any questions as well.
Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Hightower?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower. All right, now we need to open the public comment period. Do we have anyone to speak in opposition of this, um, item? Hearing none, seeing none. Do we have anyone that would like to speak in favor of this item? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Uh, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, would like to recommend approval of SP five-four-eight-three as presented.
Okay, we have a motion.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes, yeah, the items, yeah, fifty-five oh.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, do we need to correct that? Okay, thank you. Okay, um, we had a vote of five to zero on fifty-five oh-three. SP five-five oh-three. All right, we're gonna move along. Uh, SP fifty-five oh-seven is item number four, seven-hundred Canal Road Self-Storage Site Plan. Consider site plan approval for the addition of a new five-thousand-square-foot building to the existing mini storage facility located at seven-hundred Canal Road. Partial zero-three dash zero-three-six-zero-zero. Property is zone planned development district, PD, ZM two-zero-zero-six dash zero-one-six. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Matt Garcia, Reliant Real Estate Management LLC applicant, and Mark Bearden, eighty-two LLC owner. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you, this is SP fifty-five oh-seven. This is an existing self-storage facility on Canal Road. And they are proposing a new five-thousand-square-foot building, um, in the front of the facility, just really right off of Canal Road. Uh, they are proposing to add a type E buffer along Canal. And, um, there, as we were reviewing the site plan, we realized that, uh, there was an existing encroachment onto county property at the rear of the, of the site. So the Altamah Canal, um, runs behind this property. And there was an area that had been, um, cleared, was a dirt parking lot, and had a fence around it that went into the county property. And so we have had conversations with, um, the applicant's agent about the encroachment. And there is a, um, a draft, uh, suggested condition that we've, um, added to this presentation and talking with our county attorney's office just regarding that encroachment and how to handle that. So this is, uh, the property right here. This is Canal, this is the Altamah, the Brunswick Altamah Canal back here. And this is the proposed site plan. Um, all of this is existing. And this is the proposed building up here by Canal. And then as you can, um, I think the next one zooms a little more. Yeah, at the rear of the property, um, this area that's dark, this is the cleared area. And then there is a fence that runs around it. And so from, from this line out to here is the boundary of the encroachment. And my understanding is, um, they're, uh, they have previously been parking trailers and RVs and boats, um, in, in that area. My understanding is those are no longer being parked there, but there's still an existing fence and cleared area. So this is the proposed, uh, building elevations. And these are your possible motions. And this is the, um, recommended motion. This is different than what was in the staff report. Um, I did email this out to the MPC, but it was very late today. So it was really just before, before the meeting, so a lot of you may not have had a chance to see it. Um, but the recommended motion is to, um, if you desire to approve it, uh, move to approve SP fifty-five oh-seven, subject to the approval and execution of an encroachment agreement between the property owner and Board of Commissioners for the existing dirt lot and fence encroaching onto county property. And Mr. Hightower is here representing the applicant and owner. Thank you.
Um, commissioners, do we have any questions for Ms. Leaf?
Stephanie, uh, just curious, um, is this something that just, they just kind of did after it was approved? Or what, what's the history about the encroachment?
Yeah, I, my understanding is it has been out there for a long time. I, I don't know offhand when the existing facility was built. Um, but it might understand it's, it's been out there for a while, this encroachment. But I don't know exactly a, a date or how many years.
Is that, I, I guess a follow-up would be, is that just a code enforcement thing? I mean, or that, should that involve us approving this front part of the, of the site plan?
Sure. Um, yes, we have talked with the county attorney's office, so Mr. Galulie could expound on this. But, um, it, it could be either, um, code enforcement couldn't enforce it. Um, or another option, because it is county property, there could be a separate encroachment agreement that if the county is, um, willing to enter into that, the owner could enter into that with the county to allow the encroachment to continue. So I don't know if Mr. Galulie wants to add to that.
Yes, Commissioner, uh, we have been in conversation with the, um, attorney for the owner. And, um, they, uh, rather, the, um, the license, uh, for the encroachment would be a, you know, limited and revocable license, much like, um, in the case of, uh, landscaping or, you know, um, any sort of fence or something along a right-of-way on a road, which, um, is, is, uh, essentially unused by the county at the time. So with regard to code enforcement, my understanding is that, uh, typically, code enforcement will not, um, you know, pursue, um, enforcement action unless and until the county needs access to the easement. So a, um, license, a temporary license that is revocable means, uh, whenever the county may need access to that property, it would simply inform the property owner and, and, um, and the fence would need to be removed at that time.
So is the other option is they could move the fence at this time? If y'all don't reach agreement?
That's right. If the, if the Board of Commissioners, uh, you know, elects not to, uh, approve a license, then, um, the, uh, the encroachment would need to be remedied.
So yes, so I, I think my point of that question is, so could our motion be that they either reach an encroachment agreement or, or remove the fencing?
Or purchase the property from Glen County. A lot of the right-of-way along.
Has been purchased.
Has been purchased.
What, what about an abandonment? I'm sorry. No, I, uh, an abandonment would, potential application for abandonment would also remedy this, right?
Yeah, the abandonment and they purchase the property.
Correct.
The, the key is, of course, um, the site plan would either be approved or, um, denied, um, typically. But then to add a condition, it's, um, it's, it's, it's sometimes difficult to predict, um, how the Board of Commissioners might view the matter. Um, so this, uh, this proposal from staff, um, anticipates the owner applying to the board, um, for the, for the license, um, to keep things the way they are, the way they have been for some time. And, um, you know, if that were not approved by the board, then, you know, I, I don't know that the MPC can see ahead to how that discussion may, may, may go forward with the board.
So if we approve with conditions tonight, then it goes to the Board of Commissioners to reach an agreement on this encroachment? So this condition basically covers us, so?
It, it does, and I think, um, I think it's kind of a matter of authority. So, um, you know, this board wouldn't really have the authority to require the removal of the fence or allow the encroachment. So it would be up to the Board of Commissioners to, to, um, direct staff to enforce it or have the fence removed or enter into some kind of agreement or, or purchase or whatever. Is their desire to do.
I think, I think that's just, so if we make this specific motion, then if they don't reach an encroachment agreement, then they have to come back for a site plan approval? Because this says it's contingent on them getting. So I'm just, that's why I was trying to say, are some other remedy approved by the Board of Commissioners?
Yeah, I think that's a good question, cause really the way this reads is that, um, they cannot get a building permit for this addition until, you know, there is a gr- agreement in place. So I think your question is if the agreement is not reached, um, yeah, this would put this, this project on hold.
So could it be some other, an encroachment agreement or some other remedy approved by the Board of Commissioners? So they don't have to come back to us again and slow down their process that much more. So if they say, you know, we'll take the fence up, you know, then they're not coming back to us because they didn't reach an encroachment agreement.
Right, right. Yeah, maybe, I don't know, and Mr. Galulie can, um, something along the lines of, yeah, encroach on the county property, you know, or another, um, or as directed by the Board of Commissioners, or I'm not sure, towards Smith, what that might look like, but.
I, I think that would be perfectly appropriate, um, and, and, and likely helpful, um, to make it a little bit broader, as you say.
Okay.
So you're suggesting adding to this condition?
Yeah, or any, or a different remedy as approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Oh, yeah, I like that.
Yeah, I think, I think that would work.
I'll let you make that motion. Okay, commissioners, any additional questions for Ms. Leaf?
And, um, and Mr. Chairman, I don't think the public comment was opened yet, if you want to, to do that.
Okay.
Or I actually invite the applicant up too. I think we were still on the, the question period between the commissioners and staff.
Yeah, I, I believe it's time to, to, um, invite Mr. Hightower. That is imposing as Mr. Franks tonight.
Good evening, Jake Hightower, Robert Civil Engineering. Thank you for the time for the site plan. Uh, I spoke to the owner this afternoon about this exact topic. And it's almost like Mr. New read our mind, which was, can we get to a solution where if there is not an encroachment agreement, can he just have the option to take the fence back, return it back, and, uh, continue on with his site plan, do his building permit? Um, so however is appropriate to word that, but basically, yes, he, he's, he's working actively with the county to get the encroachment agreement in place. If that's not there, he's perfectly willing to come bring the fence back and, uh, bring that gravel back as well. So that's, that's kind of speaking from the owner's side. Um, but again, uh, appreciate your time and, uh, available for any other questions. But this is the site plan for a five-thousand-square-foot addition, which was triggered by the site plan approval process for the, uh, the expansion of the, uh, building. So available for any other questions.
Commissioners?
Thank you.
If I may, Commissioner? Thank you, I'm Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Hightower? For the, uh, sake of the wording, um, would it be acceptable to the owner if it were to say, um, "subject to, um, the approval of, uh, an encroachment license or removal of the encroachment"?
Yes, sir.
That specific?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd like.
So you're, you're, you wouldn't be good with the solution of them conveying the property to the property owner?
Honestly, I don't know if I'm at liberty to make that decision, right? I guess if you leave it broad, it's, it's, it's good for them, but in his mind, he just said, if we can get the encroachment, great. If we don't, take it back and be good.
Okay.
Okay, commissioners, we have any further questions for Mr. Hightower? Commissioner New? You satisfied? We want to open the public comment period now. Um, anyone opposed to this item number? If you would step forward, please? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Anyone in favor of this item? If you would step forward? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Gonna need a cheater screening. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve SP five-five-zero-seven, subject to the approval and execution of an encroachment agreement between the property owner and the Board of Commissioners for the existing dirt lot and fence encroaching on the county property, or the removal of the fence on the encroaching property and the return of the property to a similar natural state.
Pretty good. Okay, commissioners, we have a motion, we need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, I have a motion and a second. It's time for commissioners to vote. Um, all in favor? Five, zero. Yes. The motion passed. Motion SP five-five oh-seven passed in favor, five to zero.
Thank you.
All right, we have another public hearing, um, item number five, SUP fifty-four sixty-one, five-ten Bladen Road Special Use Permit. Consideration of the application for a special use permit for a place of public assembly at five-ten Bladen Road. Partial zero-two dash zero-one-eight-six-three in the Forest Agricultural Zoning District. Timothy and Joyce Bowie owners. Mr. Postal?
Good evening again. Uh, the applicant's requesting a special use permit for a place of public assembly at five-ten Bladen Road. Uh, that's necessary in the Forest Agricultural Zoning District, according to section seven oh-four in the zoning ordinance. Uh, community fairgrounds, stadiums, go-kart, racetracks, or any place of large public assembly, provided that such site is located on a site of not less than five acres. In FA zoning requires a special use permit from the Board of Commissioners. And the Buies are currently operating a wedding venue, wedding event venue in the existing barn on the property, and they operate it as the Bowie Barn. This is the, uh, zoning map showing the property and surrounding properties, all in Forest Agricultural Zoning. There's a single-family home on the property in the barn where the weddings are taking place. And these are, uh, a couple of pictures of the, uh, Bowie Barn Event Venue. And these are your possible motions tonight.
This is, uh, just to bring them into compliance for what they've been doing, you know, for several years. I've been out there a few times myself.
Sure. Yeah, no, that's correct. Uh, the owners came to the county to get a business license, and that's how we were made aware of this issue. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions, staff?
So just, the whole time it's been operating, um, it was on less than five acres? So that, like, the lot size hasn't changed?
No, no, the lot is more than sixty acres. In order to have an event venue in FA, it has to be at least five acres.
Oh, at least five acres, okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Sorry, I thought you were saying.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Okay, um, if the applicant is present, I'd like to invite them up to address the commission. Tim Bowie, thank you for allowing me to come. Any questions?
Any questions?
Commissioners? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie. All right, we need to open this public hearing up. I'd like to invite anyone that is opposed to this to come forward and address the commission.
I'm Deborah Wilson, my husband Glenn Wilson, we, we live to the one side of the Bowie Barn, 20, about 208 square feet from it, and we don't object to the, you know, the barn used as a wedding. We do object to the sounds and the noise. We have a 52 acres, and we have a pond, and the, the noise travels right through the woods to our house. We're the only ones there right now, but when we pass on, we're going to leave it to our four children. And they would have to be subject to the noise, and that's our main concern. The barn itself can, is, can be opened up, and you can hear the music. There's a lot of bass. And I, I worry more for my kids that are going to inherit the property, we're going to divide it four ways. And it's quiet, we moved out there in 1992, and then the Buies moved in 1994. We had six acres, and then we just got an auction to buy the rest of the land around us to keep it quiet, we enjoy it. My husband's got a hunting club adjacent to our land, and he rides his four-wheeler down there. It's mainly the noise. And I will say that this year's been quieter, the summers are the times when a lot of the weddings are in. I have called and complained, and I get the voicemail, and so I leave my message, but I, he hasn't ever responded. We talk to him, we're not, you know, there's no hard feelings against, you know, his living there or us living. We really, it's just the, we, we bought it to be, you know, for quiet, and if we have that, and it's around the pond, it's an acre pond, but, and it's right next to, close to his property. And if the, if it was closed in, he has a reception area that is, but the barn is mainly where they have the, the services, and if it could be closed in or something, you know, I'm wondering, I, I called my neighbors to help me, because I haven't ever done anything like this, the ones that were close to the Buies, I called this number, found out that the Stones and the Smiths were adjacent to the property, and I called, I went to see Mr. Smith, he's been sick, but he's better now, but he, he said that he didn't get a letter, and I said, what? And so, I don't know what happened. And then I went to Mr. Stones, I was hoping somebody would come with me, but anyway, everybody tells me, well, I need to come, and boys are opinion, but they don't really want, but Mr. Stone's out of town, I think, because he's got bulletin stuck in his door, so I don't know if he had got a letter or not, but I, and I believe Mr. Smith called one of you people today, when he found out about it, I don't know which one it was, the, the man that is to represent this, I don't know who it was he talked to. Did y'all talk to Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I believe I did.
Oh, you did, yeah. And he voiced his concerns, because he's got two sons living on his property, and it's about...
Ma'am, can you step closer to the mic? People are having trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry.
Pull it down, if you'd like.
Okay, he, he said that he wasn't aware of this, Mr. Smith, he's got kids that are living on the property, so, I mean, grown kids, but they were all out of, one of them was working in Augusta, and the other one goes to work in the evening. So he didn't say he wasn't one aware of this, so he didn't, but he was concerned, and he called, called you about it. And the, you said there wasn't any problems with the wedding, but the, if they were playing noise too loud, you said that we could call somebody? Is that correct?
Yeah, the Glen County has a noise ordinance, if there is a violation of noise ordinance, you can call the police.
Okay, well, I don't want to, I don't want to do that, I'm just trying to get some kind of agreement about the noise factor, and if you're living out in the woods, I call God's Country, you don't, you don't really want to, every weekend, to hear the music coming through, it's just the times that you, we, we're both retired now, but when we were working, it would be the evenings, and that's the time they have the weddings, but that's, that's all I want to say. And I, also, there was a sign that was put up at the Buies, they said, notify us that, you know, this was, meeting was coming ahead, and there is no sign. We went down the road today, he lives about a quarter of a mile in from Bladen Road, so if the sign was at the Bowie Barn, it'd be back further where his gate is, and the only way people would know is the mail, so I'm just wondering if the other people got the letters. Okay, that's all I want to say.
Ma'am, would you state your name again, please, for the record?
Deborah Wilson.
Ms. Wilson, thank you so much.
Okay, I'm through.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Okay, I'm nervous, I'm sorry.
Mr. Postal, I have a quick question for you, sir. Was this noticed properly?
Yes, I did send a letter to Mr. Jerry and Joyce Smith, and also a letter to Mr. Will and Ms. Delina Stone.
Okay.
I personally sent the letters.
And it was signed properly, as far as signage?
Yes, I sent, yes, I did put one yellow sign out on Bowie Road.
Okay.
That could be seen from Bladen Road.
Thank you, Mr. Postal.
Well, I did on July 7th, I can attest to whether it's still there now, but I did put it out there on July 7th.
You can't see it from right there?
Well, it may have fallen down.
They have it in the corner of the screen. And we got that photograph today, and we didn't see that on the front of the picture this time.
Yeah, no, I took a picture of where I put the sign, like I said, I can attest to whether it's standing right now, but I did put it out there on July 7th.
Thank you, Mr. Postal. Okay, is there anyone else in opposition of this item? Okay, hearing none, seeing none? Are there any folks in favor of this item? Okay, hearing none, seeing none? I'd like to close the public comment period. Commissioners?
Mr. Bowie, how long has, how long has the wedding venue been in operation?
We did our first wedding, did our first wedding in 2007, then one or two in 2008, 2009, a couple more, and that's about, I have a landscape business, too. That's when I started talking to Ms. Johnson at the time, that's all I wanted to do, is get a permit. And as far as all of my neighbors, every neighbor I've got, there's only about 12 families out there, every neighbor out there has used my barn. Every one of them. For either a wedding, birthday party, baby shower, they've all used it.
How, how often do you have a function out there, or a wedding?
We do around 15 to 20 weddings.
Is that a, a, a year, or...
Yeah, we do baby showers, church functions, we've organized two churches out there that are strong in this town right now. New Life Sanctuary was organized out there, and Golden House Baptist was also. We have church functions, church reunions, got baby showers, baby reveals, and most of those are not for profit. We just allow people to use our barn.
Maybe not every weekend, but...
No.
Probably...
Two a month, and the weddings, we have seven or eight left this year. Maybe nine, I'd have, I'd have to count.
Okay, didn't know if there was possibly anything that could be done. The noise, it sounds like, is the, the biggest issue with it.
It's cut off at 10 o'clock. Most of the time is before then.
I've, I've been out there more than once myself, as well, so, it's a nice facility.
And, and the closest neighbor is 420 yards.
Okay, quarter mile. Mr. Bowie, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
When you have an event at your barn, okay, do you basically let the folks have the barn and just say, have at it?
No, I'm, I'm, I am out in the middle, making sure everything's right. I talk to the DJs, when it gets too loud, I turn it down.
Okay.
And if they don't, I have a power switch.
And you are personally responsible for shutting it down at 10 o'clock at night?
I shut the music down at 10, and everybody's gone by 11. That's my policy.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay, I just wanted that...
And they all understand that ahead of time, before they book, and I think that's from every other venue we've heard about all around, that's kind of normal now.
Okay. Any further questions, Commissioners?
Can I speak to my wife?
It, 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 it is closed, ma'am, and that, the, the opposition is closed. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie, have a nice day. All right, I'd like to take this opportunity to close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we need a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of SUP 5461 as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. How does everybody stand? Okay, five, zero, S, SP 5461 has been passed as recommended and presented by a five, zero All right, I think this is the last item we have, I don't know.
No, we actually have two more, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I was getting ahead of myself. Item number six on the agenda, ZM 5514, 3740, Habersham Street rezone. Consideration of an application to rezone 3740 Habersham, Habersham Street, partial 03-08-679, from the R6 One Family Residential Zoning District to the Local Commercial Zoning District. Janelle Holling, agent for Angelo Dart, New Life Interfaith Christian Church owner. Mr. Postal?
The applicant's requesting to rezone 3740 from R6 to local commercial. The existing church is a non-conforming use in the R6 zoning district, the applicant's requesting to rezone the property in preparation for its sale, and would like to bring the existing use into conformance. This is zoning map showing the church right here, other commercial zone properties to the north and east, and then R6 lots to the south. And this is a photo of the current church and outbuilding. And these are your possible motions, and the applicant is here tonight.
Okay, Mr. Postal, is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? Mr. Postal, I assume this is sort of like Mr. Bowie's issue, that because the church is looking at being sold, discovered that it was, you know, the zoning was not right?
I, I would assume so, just to make everything right prior to the sale.
Okay. Okay, Commissioners, any additional questions? All right, I'd like to invite the applicants up to address the commission.
Good evening, Janelle Holling for New Life Interfaith Christian Church.
Commissioners, any questions?
Ms. Holling, is the, it sounds like the property's being sold, is it going to be, continue to be operated as a church?
The people that have viewed it so far, yes, intend to continue operating as a church.
Okay, thank you.
It may have been in the report, I don't remember seeing it. How long has it been operating as a church?
So the church was built in 1968, I think, we took possession in 1996, and it's never been updated to commercial, it's always been residential.
Okay. I, I know the zoning regulations came about in 66, so it was slightly after that, and the county and everybody probably weren't quite caught up to it, but at that time, so...
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any additional questions, Commissioners? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to open this hearing up for a public hearing period, and I invite those in favor. Anyone in favor that would like to speak on this item, please step forward.
I have a question, please.
Yes, come forward.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cheryl Cottigan, I live next door to the church. My only question is, when, if you guys pass it as a commercial, will the taxes for us, little guys on the other side, changes? That's my question, because for the last, last year and this year, they just keeps skyrocketing. I used to pay three something, now I'm a thousand something dollars a taxi, so I don't know, I'm still new to this, so I just need you guys to help me out to understand.
Mr. Attorney? Let me throw you under the bus.
I, I respect that decision, but I, I don't think we can answer for the tax assessor's office. You know, the annual tax assessments, you know, are, are made at the beginning of the year, subject to all sorts of market conditions, is my understanding, so very likely, most residential properties in the county have gone up in recent years. But to answer your question, the rezoning to a commercial status, there's no formula that would affect your taxes, to my knowledge. It's more of a, a market assessment. Does that make sense?
A lot of sense, thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am, I, I would like to make a comment on that, your taxes, just, I'm a citizen just like you, you can count on your taxes continuing to go up, as long as we ask for county services and government services. They're, very seldom are ever going to go down, typically, they're just going to go up and up and up and up. And that's really all, I, I mean, that's, every piece of property that I own in this county continuously goes up regularly.
Do you, do you live on the property next door?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I would definitely, just as kind of a community service, if, if you haven't gone to the tax assessor's office, commissioner's office, and made sure you've taken advantage of any homestead exemptions, possible school board exemptions, school tax, you should definitely stop in there before April 1st, I believe, to make sure you've taken advantage of those, because there may be some ways to freeze some of that upward mobility on the value that they use.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am, one more time, would you state your name, please?
Cheryl Cottigan.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You have a wonderful night. All right, anyone else in favor of this item, please step forward. Okay, hearing none, seeing none? Anyone in opposition of this item, please step forward. Any opposition? All right, hearing none, seeing none? Commissioners?
Got one question for Mr. Postal. Are the, the existing buildings with the new zoning, are, is everything within setbacks, easements, and things like that? The church building will be completely out of the setbacks, but the outbuilding will be a little bit, will, will still be in the front setbacks a little bit, it'll still be non-conforming. Is that any kind of issue for a reset? It's not, it may be an issue if they want to expand that building, but as far as the rezoning itself, it's not an issue.
All right, Commissioners, if, if there's no additional questions, we need to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of ZM 5514 as...
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of ZM fifty-five fourteen as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Okay, all in favor? Alright, five zero is the vote. ZM fifty-five oh six passed five zero. Oh, I'm sorry, is it fifty, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. You confused me. Fifty-five fourteen passed five to zero. Okay. Now, I believe we're on item seven. That is correct. Item seven, ZM five five oh six, two oh four Merchant's Way rezone. Consideration of application to rezone two hundred and forty Merchant's Way, partial zero three dash two zero nine eight three. From the general commercial, GC zoning district, to the medium residential zoning district. Chris Amos, CSEC Incorporated agent for, I'm gonna make a stab at this, Wen Kyo Ho and then Mia Sung, owners.
Think you did a good job, Mr. Chairman.
If I butchered you folks' name, I apologize. Mr. Postal?
Uh, the applicant is requesting to rezone this property from commercial to medium residential in order to construct a hundred twelve townhome units on the ten point seven nine acre site. There will be a density of ten point three eight units per acre and medium residential does allow for a density of up to sixteen units per acre. And this is the zoning map showing, uh, Nally Honda Storage Lot to the west, Legacy Apartments directly to the east. And, uh, the Nally Honda dealership to the north and of course Walmart to the northeast. And this is the, uh, concept plan for the hundred twelve townhomes. Uh, this is merchant, the curb in Merchant's Way right here, Legacy Apartments would be right here. And these are your possible motions and Mr. Amos is here tonight to speak on the project.
Mr. Postal, is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, um, any questions for staff, commissioners?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. It's about Merchant's Way. When it was originally platted in subdivision, it was approved by Glen County and accepted, but it is a private right-of-way and it's not in Glen County. I was just curious, not that it's gonna make any difference on this, but it's, uh, I guess a private road right now and, uh, I don't know if Mr. Amos could?
Yeah, that's right. I have, I have an offer of agents, Mr. Amos, and I believe he can answer your question.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, any additional questions, commissioners? Alright, Mr. Amos, come tell us all about it.
Good evening, um, so, that's our, Chris Amos, CSEC Incorporated. So, the, my clients are purchasing this property and their intent is to build this townhome project. Uh, we're working very hard to get all that stuff stood up so we can get to the next level, um, after we get through with this. The townhomes are gonna be for sale. It's not gonna be rental. So, we're gonna be going through the plating process with staff. We won't be coming for site plan approval. And the right-of-way issue, so my clients won't intend to, um, do the surveys and inspections needed to get the portion of the road in front of their property dedicated to the county. We've had conversation about contacting Legacy Apartments to see if we can get that dedicated at the same time. It should be a public road all the way through, but unfortunately it's not. But the rezoning application only deals with the portion below the road. We're not trying to do anything with the portion that's the actual road itself. And I can answer any questions you might have.
I'm gonna get it in a minute. Um, it, so I didn't get a chance to ride back here on the road. I'm, I'm fairly familiar with the property, but is the road in decent shape at this point?
It is. The road's in good shape.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't done a full inspection of it, but I've been out there numerous times since we started on this project. It is, road's in good shape.
Merchant's Way in good shape? Is that a question, commissioner? It's in very good shape.
Okay, yeah, I haven't read.
The property that is to the east of that, that Legacy Apartments?
Yes.
Um, is that truly owned by Sean Hannity?
I have no idea.
I've been told it is.
Maybe I can call Sean, call into Sean's radio show one day and see if we can get the right-of-way dedicated.
He owns that. Um, the other question I personally have is, um, you have a lot of residents that live on that property now?
Yes, we do.
That don't really have addresses?
That's prevented me from actually doing the site walk that I would have done before this meeting.
When, when the company that I worked for developed Chapel Crossing, I ran probably twenty-five to thirty people and I think they migrated there.
Right.
Off of that property. So, have you made arrangements to give them places to stay?
Well, we're not making, making arrangements to give them places to stay, but we, my clients have contacted the sheriff's department about getting them off of that property and then getting it underbrushed after we get them off the property so that we can get surveys and all of the other stuff done, geotechnical explorations and all of that.
Yes, sir. It's very unfortunate that our society is in that situation now.
Yes, it is. This is the second project I've worked on that we had this problem.
Alright, commissioners, any additional questions from Mr. Amos?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Amos. I'd like to open the public hearing period and invite anyone that is in favor of this item to please step forward. Okay, it appears no one is in favor. Hearing none, seeing none. I'd like to ask anyone that is in opposition to this item number, please step forward. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I'd like to close the public comment period. Commissioners? We need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of ZM five five zero six as presented.
Second.
Commissioners, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, the vote is five to zero in favor. So, ZM fifty-five oh six passes five zero. Alright, can we have a motion for adjourn, oh, it's, uh, uh, Mr. Maurice, do you have any?
No, we have nothing for others, Chair, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. Um, I personally would like to thank you, Mr. Postal, you, Chris, and Ms. Leaf for making this, um, chair, um, sheet, sheet for me. Y'all made it as idiot-proof as it possibly could be. I hope I didn't butcher it too much and thank you so much for what you do for our county. Have a great night. We need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And let's have a vote. The vote is five to zero to adjourn. Thank you, folks. See you next month.